I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the Seat of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, February 11th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. We've received a notification from Commissioner Seaver, she will not be able to attend the meeting tonight due to the illness. I need a motion to excuse her.
So, Mayor, I'm excused to grant the excused absence tonight because people get sick and that happens, and I certainly wish that Commissioner Seaver feels better soon. However, part of our job up here is holding people accountable, and I think we hold staff to a high degree of accountability. Sometimes we can do a better job of holding ourselves accountable. Since I've been on the board on April 9th of 2019, Commissioner Seaver has now missed seven out of 29 meetings. That's an absence rate of nearly 25 percent, and more absences than the rest of the board combined. And that also includes three out of our last four. So, again, I think just something as we move forward and as the board continues on after the election cycle, I think it's something to look at as far as redefining our absence policy. I don't know if we need to put a cap or something along those lines, but an absence rate of 25 percent, that's unacceptable.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
You made the motion.
Yes, sir.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes?
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Here.
Commissioner Seaver is absent and excused. Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Milton Smith from the Martin Hermann Missionary Baptist Church, and the Fire Department Chaplain, if you please, stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for this beautiful city. We thank you for the beautiful people that reside here. We ask, Lord, that you would bless this meeting tonight. Bless the mayor and commissioners, bless all the city's staff and the first responders, and all those who work together to make this a great place to live, work, and play. Father, we thank you for everything that you are doing and what you will do. In your great name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
(Inaudible) United States of America, a true republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now going to the public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. If anyone has any comments, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. Nita Protas, 901 Bass Shore Drive. Three times this weekend, I've heard this comment. Now that you're working on the budget, it's being said that you plan to take out city historic buildings, brick streets, and other historic items in Craig Park out of the budget. I hope it's not true, but it's being talked about all over town, and you need to know that. Part of Craig Park has been destroyed a little bit with the shuffleboard and our tennis court there. Historic trees have been cut down. They need to be replaced, and I hope the city has enough thought and respect for her historic community not to take out funding for brick streets and not to take out any funding for historic trees to be replaced and to keep Craig Park like it should be. Our buildings are beautiful. We've got such a great wealth in this community of historic, as a historic community. Don't destroy it, please. Leave enough in there to take care of our historic city buildings, replacing brick streets, and getting our community back to where people will want to come to Tarpon Springs, not only for Tarpon itself, Venice of the South, the bayou, the beaches, the Greek atmosphere, but the historic atmosphere that Tarpon has. Our history is wealth. Our history is deep, and we must take care of it and preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to my complaints.
Would you please state your name?
My name is George Lyras, L-Y-R-A-S. I'm married to Nancy Miradakis Lyras, who is born and raised in Tarpon Springs, 311 South Spring Boulevard. I got to know Tarpon Springs when I was in Gainesville as a gator back for seven years in the 60s, and my core medicine, Nick Manias, brought me here, and I echo what you just heard, that it's a beautiful town. I love it. I come here as often as I can, mostly in the winters. We missed last year, and that's the cracks of one of the problems or two. We did get a notice when we came this year with the maps from Mr. Robertson about the sidewalk that's been proposed, approved, and funded, I assume. He told us they're going out for bids. It's something that's been done. I'm not going to say anymore about that. I was around when the Army Corps of Engineers was putting the rocks out in the front of the bayou, and I remember asking the manager of the project, why not do a sidewalk and a cement? And I remember his answer was, "I'm just doing what I'm told to." So, here's what I'd like to say to you. As somebody who comes here over the years, I can see the differences in town. Some very good, some not so good. I see them because I don't see the town as often as you do. So, I was hoping that that neighborhood, which is so beautiful, would have had a more holistic solution to the problem of the sidewalks, the bicycles, the tourists that come every winter and that want to walk, et cetera. Having said that, the issue that I want to bring up today that's not resolved is the traffic and the speeding that takes place in that area. I recall back in 2013, 14, when my mother-in-law was still alive, I'm not sure if he was still the chief of police, but the police used to have a dummy car, not a dummy, but a car without a trooper there, to keep people from speeding, and we used to laugh because nobody paid attention. They're still speeding. The speed limit is 35. On Thursday last week, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, 38 cars passed going north. I don't think anybody was doing 35. At the moment they turned the corner, you can hear the car accelerating. So, I think there must be something that can be done there, be that a one-way street that accommodates, the borders, they want to come in from the south to the north and back into the bayou, be that speed bumps, be that flashing signs, something, but it's pretty dangerous. The second subject I want to bring up to you is this. First, I want to thank you for paving the alley. It's nice. When I came, I talked to the neighbor, and I said, "It's so nice they paved the alley." And he says, "Yeah." He says, "No more dust." So, I said to him, "How about the drainage?" He says, "Nobody asked us." Three nights ago, we had torrential rains. About 6,000 or 7,000 square feet of the 20,000 square foot property in the back was a swimming pool because the road that's been now paved, it's inclined and has also in the middle of a place where everything comes to our property. I don't know what to do. I don't know who to talk to. I'm just bringing it up as just another example of, you did something good, positive, but it wasn't 100 percent complete. And in my 40 years of working in the industry, I learned that small problems get to be very big problems down the road. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight?
Panayotis Kulyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I wish there'd be more people here. I wish there really would be because the times are changing right now in Tarpon Springs. For you, chief, you mayor, and you city manager, the people of Tarpon Springs have lost their faith in your ability to lead and manage this blessed city, okay? You have committed and participated in activities which are undermining the public confidence as officials of this beautiful city. Chris, when the people voted you in, your main job was to get Mark Lacorice out. You have failed the people of Tarpon Springs. But it's official. The Mark Lacorice error has come to an end. There will be no Mark Lacorice protege, no Mark Lacorice disciple who will lead this city moving forward, okay? He's created one of the most corrupt police departments.
I will let you keep talking if you change your attitude, the way you're addressing the board here.
I think I'm addressing it very public comments.
You need, no, you need to be respectful to this board here.
I am very respectful.
If not, I will ask you to stop and go outside. Thank you very much.
Okay, well...
Be respectful, will you?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Continue.
Absolutely. But let's remember.
All right.
Mayor, November 17th, November 14th, 2017, do you remember me coming here to the Board of Commissions and making my public comments? To...
Continue with your comments.
Okay. Well, I made the comments about your corrupt chief and his officer, Steve Gasson, running around the city corrupt as ever, and how you guys have completely covered him up when he commits acts of violence.
Mr. Kulyas, I did ask you to be respectful. I'm not going to ask again.
I tone has nothing to do with respect.
Okay. One more time, I will ask you to leave.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, in those public comments, I addressed Mark Lacorice in his house at 298 Peninsula Avenue. The illegal activities his son was committing there, yes. And three months later, these guys were in my mother's house with an illegal search warrant. There's more to this story than you guys could ever imagine, and when it comes to the head of the city, the head of the snake and the neck and throat is where we need to go at. These men are corrupt, okay? And the era is time to move in a new era, and I see young, active, bright commissioners, they have to make the change. And we want to hear back from you from those statements I made two and a half years ago. You had your officers come in my house, my mother's house. My mom sat barefoot in the street for 12 hours while these guys ate cases of pizza laughing. You guys went and spent the city's $100,000, you guys spent $100,000 of the city's money out of spite because of you and how corrupt you guys are, okay? And in the end, you found nothing. You found an addict, which you guys knew all along. But it was more than that. It was more than that. And then your officer, Gasson, had the nerve to write in the code violations? My mother was aware of drugs being sold at the house? No, that was you, Mark, from the statements I made, from the statements I made from November 14th, 2017, and you must address them now. You will not seek counsel from our attorney, from our city, but you will address this matter, and you will resign. You're not going to wait a year from now when everything's good. You're not. You're going to resign now, and we're not going to have another city manager, our former chief, move forward. We're going to do our jobs. We're not going to be lazy, and for the love of this city, we're going to find the right people, okay? I had to lose everything to be able to stand up here today and be as brave as I am against a couple corrupt people in this city, all the proteges, all the disciples after him.
Thank you.
Is that my four minutes? Because I think this is the one most important public comment ever.
No, 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 no. This is your four minutes. Please sit down.
Okay. Well, I'll be back to discuss further topics. Thank you. God bless you all.
The next item on the agenda is a proclamation. That's item number one, National 2-1-1 Day. The Seat of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, where it asks, "Every day, residents and visitors contact 2-1-1 to access free and confidential crisis, and emergency counseling, disaster assistance, food, health care, and insurance assistance, stable housing and utility payment assistance, employment service, veteran service, and childcare and family services." And it would ask, "2-1-1 provides expert caring help by listening, identifying underlying problems, and connecting people in need with resources and services in their community that improve their lives." And it would ask, "In 2011 in Pinellas County, 2-1-1 handled 121,289 requests for assistance and provided over $1 million in financial assistance to those in need to prevent evictions and ensure sustainability of water and electric for our most vulnerable residents." And it would ask, "2-1-1 has the finger on its pulse of our community's greatest needs, providing health and human services strength data to local community planners." And now therefore, I, Chris Alahuzis, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the Seat of Tarpon Springs, Florida, to hereby proclaim February 11th, 2020 as National 2-1-1 Day. And Ms. Jerry Castello, if you please come forward to accept the proclamation. Here, can you accept it, please? Thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much.
And I want to thank you for all the services that you provided. I know I've sent a few people down to you, and they got some help. Thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
If you please say a few words.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
On behalf of 2-1-1 Tampa Bay Cares, the Board of Directors, the advisory council staff, and our volunteers, we'd like to thank Mayor Alahuzis and the City Commission members and the entire city of Tarpon Springs for joining together with over 200 communities across the United States in recognizing February 11th, 2020 as National 2-1-1 Day. Last year, 2-1-1 was the first call for help for over 1,300 individuals and families in Tarpon Springs to stabilize housing, reduce evictions, and increase mental health, mental and physical wellness for some of the most vulnerable residents. To help celebrate 2-1-1 Day, we ask that everyone, please help us spread the word about 2-1-1, and if you're in need, please dial 2-1-1, or you can text your zip code to 898-211. And our specialists are on the phone. They're highly trained, and they are there to help you, assist you, and provide resources for whatever it is that you are in need of. We're open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we have the capability of answering in 150 different languages through an interpreter. Again, I thank you for your partnership, Tarpon Springs, and to all you commissioners, thank you so very much for this honor, and we really appreciate your being here.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Would somebody be able to take a photo of me and the...
Sure.
You would be the only city I don't have the photo for Facebook.
Will you want us to go in the front?
Thank you.
Yeah, we can do that.
And here's some sabbat pictures.
Oh, sabbat hearts. Please welcome our board chair, Sally Parks.
Come on in.
There you are.
Thank you so much.
Please introduce Parks.
I will, yeah.
She's been so good to me these past few years.
And she's my personal friend, too. Ms. Parks, do you want to comment about 2-1-1? And also, I want to welcome you to Tarpon Springs and thank you for your services for the county of Pinellas County.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this gives us, when you present this proclamation, it gives us an opportunity to remind people that 2-1-1 is there to help and to answer questions. We're an information referral system, but also a suicide hotline. And believe me, there are plenty of people, and we've given you numbers in the past about how many people from Tarpon Springs. We all think it's not going to happen in our own community, but in fact, it does.
Yeah.
People are in need, and you may not need it, but you might have other people that you know your citizens in this community might need help, and we want to be sure that we reach out to them. So, thank you for the opportunity to remind us that information and referral is there. 911, of course, is a different number, but 2-1-1, and we work very closely with 911, as a matter of fact. So, thank you for the opportunity to just remind people about its importance. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to Pinellas County.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any commissioner comments? Any public comments? Come on, Nita, you got to say something.
Yes, sir. I'll make some.
(Laughter).
I'd like to say two things tonight. When I first became a commissioner of Pius Planning Council and became mayor, Commissioner Parks was always there for Tarpon Springs. Whatever the need was, if she heard it, she'd call over here and say, "Nita, what do you need?" She didn't wait for us to ask her. She is a favorite sister of Tarpon Springs. And I just want to say about the young man, I'm sorry for what he said. As you know, sometimes I want to choke you, too, and I fuss. Sometimes I don't love you, but I'll always like you, but you get over it. It's a sad thing what's happened to his family, and I guess they're grieving, and they have to point to somebody. But we have good police in Tarpon Springs, excellent police. Those that don't know me, I make sure they find out when I get irritated with something, especially at Publix Parking Center. And our commissioners are outstanding. They're doing a good job, and they're always ready. Townsend, I love. Sometimes I like to choke him, but I can't.[1712.73][1712.73](Laughter). Commissioner Carr, when he was young, he used to go to the Hapo with me to eat. Chris, sometimes I get mad, and I let him know it. Our police chief, he'll always take your call, and he'll always give you an answer. Our youngest commissioner here, the young man who's going to go far, I expect him to be something in the state one day. I think it's going to happen, and I hope Townsend does the same thing. We've got good people in Tarpon Springs, and when Commissioner Vaticodas gets on the board, it's really going to be hot. So, you come to the meetings, tell people to come to the meetings, let these gentlemen know what you want and what you like for Tarpon Springs because they work for us. We put them in office. They may not like what we say, but they will listen, and the city manager has to listen to them with our comments. He may not like them sometimes, but we all own Tarpon Springs, not just this board. So, tell everyone to come to the meetings. It's very important. And Ms. Sally, you come up here anytime you want. I'll give you good food. I'll get it for you.
You always do, Nita.
Any other public comments? Any other public comments? I hear none. Commissioner Carr will read the proclamation of National African American History Month.
Thanks, Mayor. This proclamation will be accepted by Reverend Milton Smith. City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation. Whereas National African American History Month is observed in February of each year, and whereas for generations, African Americans have embodied the shared progress of our nation making it a stronger and better place to live and work for everybody with strength and determination. And whereas the city of Tarpon Springs is home to African Americans who throughout history have played a significant role in the economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development while working tirelessly to maintain and promote their cultural and history. And whereas National African American History Month encourages all to come together and work toward the goal of liberty and justice for all and to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Now therefore, I Commissioner Jacob Carr, by the virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2020 as National African American History Month. And this is received by Reverend Milton Smith.
Thank you, Commissioner Carr, to the mayor, commissioners. History is just what's in the world. It's a story. It's a story that we all have. It's a story that every culture has. And it's a story that needs to be told. It's a story that shouldn't be forgotten. Because if we forget where we come from, how can we ever know where we're going? And if we don't remember history, don't teach history, and don't observe history, it'd be easy to repeat history. So therefore, I want to thank the commission for recognizing African American History Month and setting time aside to give this honor. So we thank you very much, mayor commissioners.
Thank you. I'd like to express my gratitude to the African Americans for their contributions to Tarpon Springs and especially to the sponge industry. They were the first in the sponge industry here in Tarpon Springs. Actually, they started from when they did the hook sponging at the very, very beginning. But on a personal level, I remember Jesse Ross, who worked with my dad on a sponge boat. He was the cook and the person that actually was running the boat when my dad was not on the boat. So I am very grateful to have him in my memories. And I'm always grateful to everyone involved, especially with the sponge industry over the years. Thank you. Commission comments? Are there any public comments? Mrs. Prods, do you remember Jesse Ross?
Pardon?
You remember Jesse Ross, that he worked with my dad on the boat?
Yes, I do, very much, because he worked in my pop's sponge part and in the machine shop. In this month's National Geographic, it talks about the last boat, I have the book to give you Rotary Thursday, about the last boat that brought slaves to our country. We're all immigrants, are children of immigrants. That's what America has been so successful and what's made America so great. And these men and women that came on this boat, it tells about how they started their own little community, how they were separated from their families, and they've been able to trace it through generations. You must get it and read it, and it's in the library also, the National Geographic. And it tells how they got together, and the reason I'm saying this is they built a community. They built their church, they built a hospital, they built a school. And now it's become a historic venue in Mississippi and Alabama. And they've kept it alive and they've taken care of it. Every community has a historic value, and it's very important that we preserve what we have so we don't lose the history. And I wanted to tell it to this commission because we've already lost a little bit. It gets chipped away, chipped away, and chipped away. And once it's all chipped away, you can't put it back. So get it and read it. It's very interesting. Brave men and women and what they endured, but they have persevered. They sent their children, one lady was a widow with nine children, sent them all to college to become doctors and lawyers. America is the land of opportunity and we don't, thank God, we don't have socialism. But we see what's happening in countries with socialism, but we can achieve in America. It's up to our children. Drugs is killing them, but hopefully it'll turn around. Everyone, please read that National Geographic. It's a wonderful, wonderful story. And let's preserve our historic perspective.
Do you have any other comments, please?
Can I say one more thing?
Bush, go ahead.
In order to talk about history and especially African American history, there's sort of a history-making event that's going to happen tomorrow on TV. There's an African American native of Tarpon Springs, graduated from Tarpon High, will make her second appearance on the Rachel Ray Show at 2:00 tomorrow. So I think that's something that Tarpon Springs can be proud of. Angie Davis, Chicago. She is a chef and like to graduate from Tarpon High, and she will be on at 2:00 tomorrow.
Any other public comments on this item? I hear none. Thank you, Reverend Smith. We are now going to the presentation, which is item number three, Tarpon Springs High School Report. Mrs. Lisa Fialitas, our principal of the high school.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here this evening and to share a few points of pride with all of you and our local residents of Tarpon Springs. Before I begin our presentation, I do want to follow up with Mr. Smith. Chef Angela will be dining, will be hosting, excuse me, at the Outback Room on April 29 at Tarpon Springs High School for a three-course meal for the community. More information will be shared via our Facebook page soon, so we're excited to have her. I have to share that I am the proudest principal of our high schools. Our school is doing phenomenal. I couldn't be more prouder than our students, of our students, and our staff. Our faculty has really bonded with what we need to do and our goals. And it's been an incredible year. And some of the things you'll hear tonight, you will see that the pieces are definitely coming together for us as we meet our mission and vision. We do have a mission of 100% student success. All of our decisions that we make on campus kind of embrace that philosophy. So what we look at for academics, what we look at for extracurricular, what we look at for athletics, basically is to help the student move in a more successful fashion through high school and become college and career-ready. We do share a 96% graduation rate, and we are at the top of the district. We are ranked fifth amongst our colleagues with our graduation rate, and we hope to beat the 96% and with 97% at this coming year. We're very close, so it's very tangible. Couple of items I want to share, just to kind of give everyone an overview of what Tarpon is about. We have five district application programs on campus, and those programs are available to any student in the district through an application-based system. Four curriculum pathways, and this is something that we are marketing this year very, very clearly to help the community and incoming families understand what we have on campus for each and every student. We have an ACE pathway, which is the Cambridge program. We have a Tarpon Springs High School Collegiate pathway, which is a pathway to an AA degree, Associate in Arts degree, where a student can take up to 24 college credits on our campus. We're still two classes away, and we're working on actually finding an instructor that can come on campus and teach ethics as one and intro to speech communication as the other. Once we can host those two additional courses, our students will be able to take all the college credit on our campus and not have to leave to go to SPC. We have an Advanced Placement Capstone Program that is sponsored by the College Board. And we also have a traditional path for students that are not interested in taking accelerated courses and want to focus on a different variety of athletics and clubs and just want to take just regular English, regular geometry. We have those options available. So again, as we circle back to the 100% student success, we have many options that really speak to the needs and interests of our families. We have 17 elective pathways. And it's very interesting, and this has been something that we've worked on for many years now, is to provide a four-year program pathway of electives, which basically serves as like a minor in college. So the major in our particular case would be the curriculum pathways, and students could minor in a four-year program for electives. All elective programs that we have yield either an industry certification or provide college credit for the student. So again, it does embrace that 100% student success in college and/or career readiness pathway. Typically, we would have one articulation agreement for dual enrollment, and that would be St. Petersburg College, and that has worked very, very well. Proud to announce that we have a University of Florida articulation, so students can take online dual enrollment classes through the University of Florida. And just recently, we have added, and we haven't quite finalized it on paper yet, we have not signed, but Nova Southeastern University with the campuses on the Courtney Campbell Causeway, we are looking to branch our education program for students that want to continue on with education majors. I am a proud graduate of the Nova Southeastern program, so that was something that spoke very dear to me, so students can actually see where that pathway could take you if you are interested and committed. So I talked a little bit about our curriculum. I want to talk extracurricular. We have fantastic athletic programs, and tonight, as I'm speaking to you, our girls' basketball team is traveling to regionals. Tomorrow night, we're hosting boys soccer regionals, and Thursday, we have another regional meet. So our winter teams, three out of the four are headed to regionals. We couldn't be prouder. Our wrestling team headed to states for the dual meet, and we hope to see them near states or at states for the individual. We're seeing our campus come together, we're seeing our families unite, and we're seeing staff embrace students, and I couldn't be prouder. Couple of things before I get into our academic priorities, I want to close with our campus renovations. We're just wrapping up for a $17 million remodel, and that includes $3.5 million auditorium upgrade. That also includes $450,000 worth of new desks for students, chairs, cafeteria. It's going to look more like a central school hub than a cafeteria, which we're bringing that collegiate feel. Can't wait to see that. And the stage in our auditorium and the whole acoustical treatment, it's going to provide more of a theatrical feel than in historic experiences as more as an auditorium. So now we can do more theatrical plays and dances and really give students that opportunity to thrive. Proudly, I can tell you that Tarpon High is strong, is solid, and is steadily growing, and that is something due to hard work, tenacity, and effort. But as much as we want to continue to share all these wonderful things, I do want to share with you our academic priorities. And so I am going to leave with that tonight. Our academic, as we move forward the rest of semester, and we're waiting for our end of the year testing, we are planning on closing the achievement gap between our African American and Hispanic student, no, African American and Hispanic student population, as well as our students with disabilities. The federal index last year has reported that we do have some gaps in the proficiency levels of students in those subgroups. So we are closely monitoring, and we're very deliberate about what we bring to the table to provide those students with enrichment. We're looking to increase opportunities for our students to take honors and college-level courses. And we break down this data by students that are participating. We take a look at gender, we take a look at race, and we also take a look at the trajectory over a three-year period. Is Tarpon High growing? Are we stretching our students to their fullest capacity? We're looking to increase numbers in our industry certifications, especially with our college and career technical adult education. We had 342 certifications last year. We're hoping to double that this year. We have brought on another teacher, and we're looking to expand in the future by adding two additional classrooms. So definitely room for expansion with our business program. We're looking to increase proficiency in reading and math as outlined by the Florida Standards Assessment and the School Grading Formula. And we hope to overall increase our points for our school grade to a minimum of 620 points in order to bring home the A. We're about 52 points away from that goal last year, so we have a lot of momentum and we hope to celebrate in the near future with everyone in the community when we bring our A back home to campus. Want to thank you all for the opportunity, and if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer. I have left business cards for you, and I look forward to partnering up with our students and the city of Tarpon Springs in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fialitas. Before we comment, I'd like to recognize Eileen, Ms. Eileen Long. She is the Pinellas County School Board member, and she is a big supporter of the schools here in Tarpon Springs, and thank you for your service. Miss? Misses, Ms. Long, we can't hear you from there. Can you please?
Thank you. First, I have to tell you, you have a wonderful principal.
Oh, thank you.
For three years that I've been on the board, you have just done a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
And this is my home away from home. I'm a Dunedin resident, but I love Tarpon Springs. On Tuesday, April 24, Tarpon Springs High School will be hosting the Pinellas County School Board. We take our meetings out once to the south, which is next week in Lakewood, and then in the spring, we're coming up to Tarpon because we're going to show off our beautiful new campus. So I hope all of you will come and see what a wonderful just movement that's happening in Tarpon Springs. They're going to have an A. I'm sure of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Liz Fialitas, I wanted to thank you for the update. Updating us, the Board of Commissions, and also the people of Tarpon Springs, because everybody's watching you on TV right now.
Okay. Thank you.
But I wanted to thank you for inviting me to the school and showing me the additions and all the improvements that we have in the school. It was great to visit my old school, the Home Sponges.
I know.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure having you.
I'd also like to congratulate our girls' soccer team.
Yes.
And I wish them the best, and I think they're going to be winners Thursday night.
They are. They are. I'm proud of them, and the staff is proud, our families are proud, and it's definitely a community effort to support our school. And that is one of the treasures of Tarpon High and of the city of Tarpon Springs. It is a community event.
By the way, the helmet looks great.
Thank you. Thank you.
The sponge helmet. Commission comments? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Fialitas, I want to thank you for your presentation tonight. You gave us some great facts to share within the community. As the mayor mentioned to you, this is being livestreamed right now, so hopefully members of the community are watching as we speak and can also appreciate your presentation. Just wanted to reiterate some of the stats that you gave us. You said that 96%, we have a 96% graduation rate at Tarpon High, which I think is outstanding. And you mentioned that we were fifth-ranked among our colleagues. And I'm just wondering, our colleagues being Pinellas County, Pinellas County?
Yeah, Pinellas County, I'm sorry. Yeah, out of the 17 traditional high schools, we're fifth place with our...
Yeah, out of the 17 traditional high schools, we're fifth place with our graduating rate.
I can appreciate the different pathways and programs that you're offering our students in terms of their own pace or their desires in their adult life and the different education routes that they can go to fulfill their dreams, so I think that's a wonderful thing. Our winter teams, three out of four are going to regionals. You've got to be proud of that. And I'm also hopeful that you can bring home the A for Tarpon High. I think you all deserve it, and I think you've done wonderful things as a leader of your school.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor. Being a graduate and obviously alumni of Tarpon High, it's a lot of proud things to be proud of as a Tarpon resident, and I'm super proud of everything Tarpon High has going on. I don't think there's many high schools in Pinellas County I could say that are over 100 years old and have so much history, rich history as Tarpon High has and continues to bring forth each year. So thank you for cultivating that atmosphere and everything you're doing for the students there at Tarpon High, and I appreciate your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan, another sponger.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm a proud alum, really excited for the future of Tarpon Springs High School, and I don't know what the criteria was for those rankings, but Tarpon High is the best high school in Pinellas County, as I'm sure you know.
Thank you.
I'm also really proud of Coach Hill and Tarpon Springs High School Football for really making efforts in the community lately, doing different community cleanups. Also, Ms. Fadalis, again, thank you for working with me on the Fred Howard Park Field Trips, which we should see a conclusion to this spring, which I'm excited that we were able to get that. And the boys' soccer game is tomorrow at Tarpon High at 7:00 PM. So everybody, if you're free, make sure you come out and support them. It's their regional game. But again, thank you, Ms. Fadalis. Couldn't be more proud of Tarpon High.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, before I close, I do want to thank Tarpon PD for their support.
Are there any public comments on this item? Would you please go to the podium? Thank you, George. George, would you please go to the podium? Thank you.
We have 1,370 students, approximately.
Do you remember how many students were when you graduated?
101.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Here none. Thank you, Ms. Fadalis. Okay, we're now going to the consent agenda, item number four. A is the minutes for, A is the October 8, 2019 regular session. B is October 8, 2019 work session. C is October 22nd, 2019 regular session. D is November 5th, 2019 regular session with the corrected minutes. E is November 12th, 2019 regular session. Number five is special events. A is Fine Arts Festival, March 14 and 15, 2020. B is the Garden Club Plant Cell on March 28, 2020. And C is the Sweet Corn Festival on May 16, 2020. Number six is to approve increase to bid number 180148BJJ Construction of Wells, 101114 Row Water Main. Number seven is the award file number 200068CAM Road and Landscaping Materials, Co-op Pinellas County Contract Number 1890328BAM. Number eight is the award file number 20065NJL Public Safety Health Screening. And number nine is the award file number 20055BAM Rip Wrap. Number 10 is the award file number 20062NJL Single Source Purchase of Pumps and Repair Parts Myers. Number 11 is to ratify and increase in review file number 160076CCM Lighting Street, City Own Installation and Repair, City of St. Petersburg, RFQ Number 5966. Number 12 is the award file number 20070CJL Hydrant and Valve Installation Repair and Maintenance through Seminole County Contract Number 1FP60234715GCM. Are there any items that you'd like to pull?
Number nine.
Number nine.
Number nine for me as well.
Commissioner Carr? No. Good. Any questions or comments on items four through 12 with the exception of number nine?
I just have a comment on number five, A, with the Fine Arts Festival. Now, we have Jean here from the chamber. She told me earlier today it's going to be going on three years that she's been in Tarpon Springs, and she's really done a great job, I think, overall with the chamber. I just want to recognize her and her staff on what they've done overall. So I just want to say thank you for everything you're doing in Tarpon Springs. Obviously, this is a big event that brings in a lot of tourism and a lot of money to our businesses, so it's something that we should celebrate every year. So thanks for being here and representing the chamber.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on the items four through 12 with the exception of nine? I hear none. Need a motion?
Motion to approve, except number nine.
Second.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapani?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Yes. Now we're going to item number nine, which is the award bid number 20055BAM Rip Wrap. Vice Mayor, you were first.
Thank you.
And I think it was Commissioner Donovan next.
So I see we don't have Jay here, and I don't see Tom either, so. So I see that the annual amount of $31,000 and an aggregated amount not to exceed 156. So, oh, I see. So it's a five-year contract. Okay. Sorry, I didn't see that before. And then my question is, first of all, you know, I'm glad to see that a local company won the bid. I do, I do wonder why there was only one response out of nine plan holders, but maybe it's just the size of the bid to begin with. But my question is, is this just for materials or is this for materials and installation?
Materials. It's mostly for our ponds, it's mostly for the pond, stormwater ponds.
Stormwater ponds throughout town?
Yes.
Okay. So it's just the materials, and then I guess southern landscaping materials brings us the material, dumps it in a public yard, public services yard, and then we are responsible for putting the material out?
Yes. And again, it's up to, again, it's an up-to-a-year, the $31,000, so.
Yeah, it's as needed.
As needed.
Yeah, got it. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you. Yeah, the first part, I just wanted to clarify a little bit for public information that this rip wrap was going to be for various, you know, ponds, runoff areas, that sort of thing. The second thing that I just wanted to see if I could get board consensus on is just that the board is notified whenever this money is being spent for the materials. I'm just a bit wary of rip wrap in general from the South Spring Boulevard rip wrap. So I just wanted to see if our board maybe wanted to just make sure that, hey, when we're spending this money, when we're buying rip wrap, we're being notified of where the rip wrap is going, whether it's via email, whether it's at a public meeting. Again, not in the, you know, not in the name of micromanaging, but more just so that the public and the board knows exactly what's going on and where rip wrap is going to be going throughout the city.
Are you saying that every time they're working on a pond, you want to be notified? Because that's what they're going to use for.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying whenever, whenever a dime of the $31,200 is spent, I think it'd be worth getting an email or being notified, yeah.
I'll support that, just because of the issue that we've had in South Spring Boulevard.
I mean, I don't, I can understand it on some projects where we've asked for notification, but on this particular item, I don't see a need for us to be notified. I mean, it's on an as need, so I mean, I understand every penny you want to know when it's spent, but I mean, for a project where, you know, we're going to get a couple grand worth of rock to put at an existing stormwater project, I don't see the need for the commission to be notified, but that's just my opinion.
There was one project that would be concentrated on, I can see that would be notified, but this is, they're going to be using throughout the city, maintenance or new projects or something like that. I see, to me, I think it's a little bit of micromanaging.
Well, it can't hurt to get a notification, right? I mean, it's an email.
I mean, your commission, you can go to the city manager and you request what you want daily.
Mayor, can I just make one comment? I understand what Commissioner Donovan, I appreciate you bringing this up. It's nice to know as a commissioner more of the projects that are going on on a day-to-day operational standpoint, not to manage the day-to-day operations, but to understand, like, for instance, Bay Shore, they have an in-house sewer project going on. I didn't know about that, but then when I walked the street, I see it, right? And then residents reach out to me about it. So it's just, it is nice to know, like, what city projects are going on as a commissioner, and it would be appreciative to have some more of the city projects, at least if it's a weekly thing. I'm not, again, it's not a micromanagement situation, it's just more of an acknowledgement to say this is what's happening around the city.
Yeah, Commissioner Carr, I think this is a little different because this is something that we used to get, and we can make sure that we get it, get an update of different projects that are in process and projects that are being completed. And all that issue, also, it should be on the website for all the residents to be able to have that information as well.
I mean, I can just tell you that I'll never turn down additional information, but for me, this isn't a project, this is more so maintenance. So, I mean, more information's welcome, but I wouldn't require it.
I won't either. But I like the fact that we should have a report of the projects that we in progress and projects that are being reported, not only for us, but also for the people. It should be on the website.
Yeah. I mean, another good example is like the fire hydrants that we just approved in the consent agenda of like some type of progress on where those are going for this coming year, how many have been replaced, et cetera. So it's just good to know where the funds are going. And we could share that all of a sudden in our newsletter at times, too, on the quarterly water bill newsletter.
We have two to two.
Tom?
Any other comments on that one?
I can't vote, sorry.
Any other comments on number nine? Are there any public comments on number nine? I need a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
In roll call, please.
Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapani?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you. And now going to the audience and resolution. Item number 13 is a Resolution 2020-03 Supporting Extended Turn Basin Anchoat River Dredge Project. City Attorney, please read the resolution.
This is Resolution 2020-03, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, supporting the dredge of the Anchoat River Extended Turning Basin. That was the reading of Resolution 2020-03 by title only.
Staff report, Mr. Licorice.
Yes, I'm having to do this report for Bob Robertson. We knew he couldn't be here tonight, but because of the timing that we have to get this information to the DEP on the request for information, we had no choice but to do it tonight. This is simply a resolution that we're going to add to materials. We're in the process of permitting the dredging of the turning basin. We've been asked to supply more information, and one of the things that we wanted to do was send this resolution to show part of the support for it. So Mr. Robertson did this on rather fast notice, and we have this that we want to include in our packet. You also have an email from Mr. Vaticiotis that asks to put some historical information on there. You know, I see no problem if the board, if the board wishes to add that information. It's all factual information and relates to the history of it, so there's no issue with that. As we say, we don't know what this may, what good this may do with the permit, but it certainly can't hurt, and especially seeing from this board some support along with the other materials. So we're asking you to pass this resolution. Again, decide to add the language on the history in it, and then we'll have that in the packet that we have to get to them by the 20th of February.
I know we got some concerned citizens because this project is so important to us, but as the resolution stated, there is resolutions emphasizing the support of the Board of Commissioners and the people of Tarpon Springs, a little bit about the Anchoat River. That's a national channel, and it's very important to our local economy. It brings $252 million to our local economy, and it provides 2,500 jobs to the Tampa Bay region, and is also a safe haven to our large boats. But the turning basin, which is just as important to us because that's where the boats are using to turn around, they claim it's not part of the national channel, but it's very, very important to us as well. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the state representatives, Chris Pross and Chris Ladvala, and the state senator, Ed Hooper, for submitting and supporting the bill for additional funding of $812,000 to dredge the extended turning basin. I think this is very important, and I'd like to make sure that the credit goes to them because they've been very helpful to us. Mr. Licorice, if we have any delays on this project, please let me know, and I call Colonel Kelly, who is the director, actually, he is the commander of the Army Corps of Engineers, and make sure that either he's going to help us over the phone or he's going to come down here as he did before, so. And I will support to add the addition of information that was provided by Mr. Vaticiotis. Vice Mayor Terapani?
Thank you, Mayor. Absolutely proud to support this resolution tonight. I think we all know how important it is to our local economy in the greater Tampa Bay region to have the Anchoat River up and running as an active viable commercial port. One of the stats that the mayor left out, which I'll mention, is that 50% of all, let's see, 50% of the value of all commercial fish land. Land, that's what it says, 50%. Yeah. I mean, in Tarpon Springs.
Yep.
It's incredible. So definitely worth noting, and I'm happy to support some additional historical language provided by Mr. Vaticiotis to help beef up the resolution if, you know, if necessary. I think that any time you can beef it up helps. I mean, we're going through the effort to adopt this resolution. I think it shows support. I'm sure it'll be unanimous from this board, and I think we all know the value of it, so happy to support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Absolutely, I support this resolution. I want to thank the group that has worked on this for many, many years to get funding, and I'm glad that the city is able to stand behind you all and fight for this funding. Proud to be a part of this board that lobbies for this funding for our residents, for our business owners, and for the workers of Tarpon Springs. I also want to thank Commissioner-elect Vaticiotis for providing the additional history of the dredges and what have happened in the past. I think it's an important thing to add to the resolution, and looking forward to communicating with our elected officials in the state to making sure that the funding comes down to our city. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, obviously, I'm glad to support this resolution, and I, something I wanted to emphasize in the resolution is a portion, it says, "Whereas, due to the facts stated above, the city has future plans to request inclusion of the exterior turn basin and the Anchoat River Federal Navigation Channel for future maintenance dredging through the Army Corps of Engineers." I think that's something really important, so that when we go through this process 10 years from now or however long, this is going to be included in the actual federal channel, so we don't have this big ask at the last second for everything that we need. Also, I would absolutely support the Commissioner-elect's recommendation. I think it adds some strong historical emphasis that was needed on this, so thank you for that. But other than that, I'm just really excited to get this thing done. I think if we wait any longer, I'm going to jump in the river with a shovel, start the dredge myself, because this is something where, you know, it's nice to say we got the funding and we did this, that, and the other, but, I mean, people have been campaigning on this for five years now. So I'm tired of this just being a talking point. I'm excited for this to get done, and hopefully this resolution's another step in the right direction.
Thank you.
I want to thank Commissioner Donovan because that future steps, he's already got information and stuff and already ready to proceed with those future steps. That's why we had, that's one reason we had the line, and so I want to thank, he's already got the initiative going to work on, to work on that one, sure along with all the rest you and the commission, but he's already trying to make contacts now on it, so.
In the audience tonight, we have residents and business owners that are working with us on this project, and I want to thank you all. Thank you. Any public comments on this item?
So, explain to me and make me understand. The turn basin is not going to be taken care of on this go-around? They're not going to do? They're not going to do any extra work on the turn basin?
Well, the, the channel, it's one thing, it's a project that will be handled by the Army Corps of Engineers, but also the turn base, the, there's a bill that has been submitted and supported by Commissioner, I mean, excuse me, Representative, State Representative Chris Prowes and Representative Chris Ladvala, and also Ed Hooper, who is the state senator.
Two things I'm disappointed in. The lady who is doing the engineering and all the workforce should have been here before this meeting. She's never been here before. And when you have a project like that, and you're paying her that kind of money, she should have been here at least once or twice before this last encounter. The second thing is, if the city had gone for BP money, we'd have gotten a lot of money, and I do not understand why you, as a board, did not go after BP money when even servers in this town got quite a bit of money, and you see what Clearwater got, what Dunedin got, you failed us on that. Nobody, you didn't go after BP money, we would have had the money do what we need there. And, you know, I'm right that we didn't go after it. Shame on Tarpon, we could have made big money.
I don't think anybody on the board was here there.
I didn't pay there, was.
Not me.
BP money was paid for everything, but we were. And the Congressman's office offered, because I brought up the message three times, the help. We really dropped the ball on Tarpon Springs by not going after BP money.
Thank you.
Thank you for, if you had to, your appearance.
Coast to Vaticiotis, five thirty-eight, West Cedar Street. First, I recognized Commissioner Park, and I want to mention her again, and Commissioner Todd, Barbershop Todd, and also Commissioner Calvin Harris, and of course Fred Mark was the county administrator. They were basically instrumental, they got our money for us from the county that last go-round back in the nineties, and it just inspires me to see her, and she looks great. So I'm not going to repeat what I stated in the memoranda, I think they're all self-explanatory. My, my belief is, we just need to do better. I'm hoping that the commission looks at this as a learning experience. This is not a particularly hard project, in my opinion. We've got history on our side, and we've got experts in the community that are willing to help. In fact, Mayor, that group of five men probably is about ten percent of that two hundred and fifty-six million dollars that's brought into Tarpon Springs, and they're all extremely knowledgeable, excuse me if I underestimated that, maybe twenty million, but they're very good at what they do, and they're very important to this community. We have a charter amendment that I fully suspect is going to be approved in section eight, and I think it's subsection O that talks about the recreational channels and the cuts between the spoil islands, and we're going to be going to DEP quite often, once that's approved. And we need to kind of set the tone of who we are, we haven't been there in a while as the City of Tarpon Springs, but we need to set the tone with them of who we are, and that we know what we want, and we know what our needs are, and we shouldn't concede anything. If we know what we want, and there's a reason for it, we need to be able to articulate that. The worst that I would hate to see happen is we go and file something for dredging between two spoil islands, and we're told, but we don't really see the need for that. We need to be very clear as far as what the need and what the importance is to that community, to our community. Also, we're paying an awful lot to Tetra Tech, you saw a figure that I threw out there. If we're going to be doing this on a more regular basis, once for the recreational channels and then elsewhere, I think we need to take a harder look as far as how to do this more efficiently. We can spend an awful lot of money on environmental permitting very easily, and I think it would become, if this is typical of what we would have to do for the recreational channels, it's going to become quickly unaffordable, not because of the dredging, but because of getting the permission to do the dredging. So I think we need to take a hard look, and if you can think about that, ways of, other ways of doing things a little cheaper would be much better off. As a matter of fact, one thing that's always missing with these consultants from out of town is their local knowledge, and I think if we would have had that local knowledge, perhaps with that consultant canvassing some of these folks that you see here, we'd have been much, in a much better position with DEP. Commissioner Carr mentioned that the one thing that kind of went through my mind in the meeting with the consultant last week was the fact that we do have funding pending up in Tallahassee, and the information I received at that meeting basically demonstrates that we're not in a very good shape right now with DEP in articulating what our needs are. In fact, they're talking about, in the last memorandum I sent you today, about a proprietary project that is outside the dredging, because they're not convinced that what we're asking for is within the public interest. All it would take is one representative, is that my buzzard?
Mm-hmm.
All it's going to take is one call from Tallahassee to DEP to ask how we're doing, and I don't think, we need for them to be supportive of our project as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Athena, it's Ardulia, six thirty-four, East Orange, and thank you for tolerating me once again on this subject. First of all, I want to thank the board, everyone entirety, including Mr. Licorice, for your advocacy for funding for this project, along with us, the citizens and the Marine Commerce Committee, and we're here to back you up and help you any way we can. So we have had some success with funding, and I'm hopeful that the state money will come through as we would like. It's, as you all know, we've been at this five years, it's been a very long project, and I hope it comes to a successful fruition soon. So with regard to the exterior turn basin, it is vital to the maintenance dredge of the channel itself. So maintenance dredge is all the way across, as Commissioner-elect Vaticiotis has educated us there. I want to paraphrase Mr. Licorice, so I hope, I may not get every word correct, but he said it the best way, and it was really clear for me to understand. So the exterior turn basin is right adjacent to the turn basin in the federal channel. It is a big pile of sand right now. So you dig a trench in the turn basin in the channel, and what's going to happen? The water is simply going to push the sand into the trench. So in order to preserve the work that the Army Corps will do for the federal channel, we must get this exterior turn basin done. So I, too, want to thank Commissioner Donovan for the future plans to include the exterior turn basin in the channel itself. I think that'll eliminate a lot of this, at least I hope, going forward. So I ask you again, you've done a great job out there getting this money. Please redouble your efforts and remind our elected officials, our governor, our state senator, our state representative, even our congressman, Mr. Bill Arrakis, who's helped out a lot here, and our senators, one of whom was a former governor, that their advocacy can't end with just funding. We need them to care about this project, to push it, to really convince the state, county, and federal agencies how badly we need this, and we've needed this for so long. So please, I implore you, and we are all here to help you, and everyone that couldn't come this evening, we are at your disposal, whatever we have to do. But I will say, we can't give up an inch of this turn basin, we need it all. So please tell them this, that we've got to have the whole thing done. We can't do half measures, they can't cut pieces of it off. Please, please, make this clear to them. So, thank you, and thanks for listening.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Come on, guys. She said it. And thank you for all the passion, Frank, that you're bringing in, appreciate that. Any other commission comments? If not, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the resolution with the additional whereas, whereas is by Commissioner-elect Vaticiotis for the resolution.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terepanny?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and next is item number fourteen, the ordinance two thousand and twenty dash zero one, police pension amendments. This is a second reading. City Attorney, if you please, read the ordinance.
Yes, this is ordinance twenty twenty dash zero one, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending city code, chapter two, article three, division one, section two dash thirty-five F five, of the City of Tarpon Springs Police Officer's Pension Plan to extend the two-point-one percent cost of living adjustment in the fifth year following retirement to all retirees who retired prior to October one, two thousand, providing for the inclusion in the code, providing for severability, providing for repealer, and providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero one by title only. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on January thirtieth, I'm sorry, January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Staff report?
No further comments from what we had the first time.
Nothing from the first reading.
Okay. Any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here are none. The chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terepanny?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes. Next is item number fifteen, this is the ordinance two thousand and twenty dash zero four, fire pension amendments. This is a second reading. City Attorney, please read the ordinance.
Mayor Commissioner's ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, further amending the City of Tarpon Springs Firefighters Pension Trust Fund adopted pursuant to ordinance number two thousand dash eighteen, and subsequently amended to implement the conclusive firefighter cancer presumption established by section one-twelve-point-one-eight-one-six Florida statutes, and rebuttable disease presumptions under sections one-twelve-point-eighteen, one-twelve-point-one-eight-one, and one-seventy-five-point-two-three-one Florida statutes, amending section three, Board of Trustees, amending section eight, disability, providing for codification, providing for severability of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four by title only. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Coach Young, you got any information?
No further comments from the first meeting.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here are none. Need a motion?
No move.
Commissioner Donovan? Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terepanny?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes, thank you. Next is item number sixteen, this is the ordinance two thousand and twenty zero five, add ad valorem tax exemption, this is the first reading. City Attorney, if you please, read the ordinance.
This is ordinance twenty twenty dash zero five, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, establishing exemption from certain ad valorem taxation for certain new businesses and expansion of existing businesses to be codified as chapter seventeen, article five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for definitions, providing for establishment of economic development ad valorem tax exemption, providing for an application for exemption, providing for the Board of Commissioners, consideration of such application, providing for no application fees, providing for continual performance, providing for Board of Commissioners revocation of exemption, providing for severability, providing for a sunset date, and providing an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero five by title only. The second reading will be held on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, and will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Staff report?
Thank you, Karen Lemmons, Economic Development Manager. The purpose of the Economic Development Ad Valorem Tax Exemption is to give the city another tool, our economic development toolbox, as an incentive to help attract new businesses to the city and help existing businesses expand. It also brings in jobs that are at higher wages than the average in Pinellas County, and helps keep us at a competitive advantage with nearby communities that already have adopted and established the program. Right now, there's about thirty-nine counties that have the program in more than twenty-five cities locally, St. Petersburg, Tampa, Clearwater, Pinellas Park, and Oldsmar has recently adopted this. So the program is essentially, it's outlined in the state statutes, the authority to grant exemptions must be done by referendum. So as background, on December fourth of two thousand and eighteen, the BOC approved Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty to put the referendum question on the ballot for March twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, and with that question, the voters approved the question with sixty-three-point-seven percent of the vote. So given that, this ordinance is in front of you that establishes the parameters of the program, I'll go through what the criteria is. It would provide for a one-hundred percent annual maximum ad valorem exemption. This is up to a hundred percent, so if we get any applications, you could always go below that, but by adopting the hundred percent, it gives you the full flexibility. It would provide for a five-year maximum exemption period for any business. It would provide for a hundred thousand dollar minimum capital investment, so that means an eligible business would need to invest at least a hundred thousand dollars into the project, excluding any land. And then by state statute, there are job creation requirements, so eligible companies would have to be either manufacturing, and they would have to create at least ten jobs. A qualified target industry, and each of those qualified target industries would need to create at least ten jobs. Business with sales, these are businesses that have more than fifty percent of their sales revenue coming from outside the state of Florida, and then office, and those are offices not in the target industries would have to provide at least up to fifty jobs. And again, the statutes require an average wage, so the average wage for these new jobs would have to be above the average wage in Pinellas County. Currently, the average wage in Pinellas County is forty-seven thousand two seventy-three. So the companies would have to meet all of those eligible criteria in order to apply for the program. That's essentially what this ordinance creates right now, is the parameters of the program. So if you have any questions on that right now, otherwise I can go through what the approval process is, that comes later.
Ms. Lem, thank you for bringing this program forward, even though that was approved by the voters in the referendum. Do we have any businesses that are able to take advantage of this incentive?
Well, again, this is for newer existing businesses to expand, so in terms of new businesses coming in, we don't have any right now that meet these criteria, I don't know of any. And there could be some existing businesses that, once this is approved, could take advantage of it.
Thank you. I support this, this program again. This program is good for businesses, it's good for the city, and it's good for the people of Tarpon Springs, because this incentive encourages new business to come to Tarpon Springs, also to, to help the existing local businesses, but it creates jobs with the highest pay, so I think this is really good for, for the people of Tarpon Springs, and thank you for bringing it forward. Any commission comments? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Karen, thanks for your presentation. This is definitely something that I think the board as a whole would look to you to come to us with and present, so I appreciate you doing that. I think that, in a lot of cases, you hear this board talk about, especially around budget season and regarding the mill rate, this board talks a lot about Tarpon Springs maintaining a competitive edge with surrounding communities as it relates to industry, as it relates to business retention, attraction, et cetera. So I think this certainly helps keep us on par with that, given that surrounding communities are already taking advantage of something like this. So a couple of questions regarding the approval process. I see that Pinellas County Property Appraiser does have to sign off on this to some degree, but other than that, it appears that this is pretty much an in-house thing, so I'm grateful for that, right? As far as your agreement, have you started drafting that at all yet, or you wanted to make sure we came before first reading first?
Yeah, we have a draft agreement that the City Yeah, we have a draft agreement that the city attorney has been helping with, and we'll be bringing that forward at the second reading after the ordinance is approved for second reading. Then, there's another resolution that will be approved after that, and that approves all the documents. It includes the application itself that the company has to provide, the agreement with the city, and then, we also will be requiring an annual report. So, if there is a company that's eligible and we grant an exemption, they'd be required to do an annual report every year to make sure that they keep up with the requirements, the number of jobs and the wages.
Gotcha. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but the biggest advantage here is as it relates to ad valorem tax increments, right? So, if the business owner is different than the property owner, is it an advantage for the business owner to negotiate with the property owner that, look, you're going to get a tax exemption here? I think it is. But, the real advantage is to the person who owns the property, right?
Right, because it's on the improvements that they make. So, if somebody comes in and builds a big manufacturing facility, the exemption would go on the improvements.
Right. So, I'm sure in your agreement, you're incorporating an area for both the business owner and the property owner to sign off on, much like we would with the facade grant or something like that, right? Gotcha. Okay, great. I think this is a good idea. I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my only question, I have a few additional comments, but my only question is just if there were any properties or locations in town that you could see as a, you know, high potential site for one of these businesses coming in?
I would think that the area north of the Anclot River where we have a lot of undeveloped property, that we've been trying to attract some potential there would be another, would be one. And also, the area by Live Oak and U S nineteen, ABC Packaging and Barnett Outdoors are there. There's some underutilized buildings there. I can see if something turns over there, if somebody new comes in, they might want to expand or do something else. That's another industrial area.
Okay. Thank you. And then, actually, coincidentally, for the M P A program at U S F I'm doing right now, I just recently did like a big study of Pinellas County Economic Development. This is something that they've done successfully for a long time. Something I did notice, though, and I know we spoke about this, but just for the board's sake, is that on their website, they have a really cool, almost like a real estate map of the county, and it includes zoning and planning department numbers and stuff like that for potential businesses coming in. And what it also offers is city demographics and business summaries of where cities currently stand, and they were last updated July twenty nineteen. And in our resident workforce population by industry, it broke down, you know, our resident workforce population and where they work. So, you know, two thousand people work retail or something along those lines. And under our fishing industry, it had that we had zero fishing jobs employed in Tarpon Springs. So, I mean, obviously, that's incorrect. But, that's just something that I wanted to point out so that we can work with Pinellas County Economic Development a little bit closer, just to get factual numbers there because I don't know how that would influence this, but let's say a business was coming in and they said, oh, well, they don't have any marine commerce in Tarpon Springs, which, I mean, couldn't be farther from the truth, right? So, that's just something to keep an eye on, is just ensuring that their website is representing us accurately. A couple other programs that the city does that I think have been successful for them, they use an expedited permitting process program for a lot of their targeted industries that we're talking about here, and also in areas that are like kind of starving for redevelopment. So, for us, that may be areas like, you know, the property in downtown, Manatee Plaza, something like that. It just kind of helps quicken the process for permitting and building development. And what that kind of looks like is like, you know, they'd say, hey, if you want to develop in this area, we can cut the average response time, you know, by two, by a third or something like that when it comes to those requirements. And then, I think somebody on this board brought it up at a C R A meeting once. It was a small business incubator program. That might have been Vice Mayor Terapini. Was that you? They actually do something very similar to that where their Economic Development Manager and their staff would meet with small businesses and just give them any advice that they may need. So, you might just have a few hours open on a day of the week where a new business could come in and say, hey, you know, where's my target audience here? What should I do? And it's just kind of like a little incubator program that offers free advice. So, I think it's really great that we're kind of taking cue from Pinellas County on this. And I think there's other, you know, other opportunities for some successful piggybacking with them.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor.
Karen, thank you for bringing this back before us. Like, I want to echo Vice Mayor, this is really falling under the economic development standpoint and keeping the city competitive amongst other cities in the area. I just want a clarification. When you talked about qualifying criteria, it talks about a hundred percent annual maximum ad valorem exemption. That's only for the City of Tarpon Springs ad valorem portion of it, correct?
Correct.
It doesn't count towards the county or any other part, right?
Just the city portion.
Okay. And then, this is citywide. It's not like a specific area in the city?
Correct. It's citywide.
Okay. And then, in the back, it talks about like a sunset date and ten years. Does that just happen to be like the, is it from like when the resolution is adopted or when it's voted by the tax or the residents? Do you have any more details on that, or can we follow up on that in between the next meeting?
It's because of the state statute requires it.
Okay. So, the state statute talks about, once it's approved by the voters, you have ten years in at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
That's in that statute that's referenced in Karen's memo, one ninety-six point one nine nine five. It's down in the fine print.
I've got it here. I appreciate that. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I've got a question for clarification on that, Mayor. So, it's from the date of adoption of the potential resolution, not from the date in which an applicant received the exemption? Is that your understanding?
So, if there was an approved application, it could, and it provides for a term, it could, you know, run past that ten-year period of time if they're already in the slot, okay? So, you don't have to worry about it. You have a five-year plan, but you do it in the ninth year, does it end?
Gotcha.
The answer is, is no. It'll continue until whatever that period of time is that you provided. And these things that Karen are mentioning, you know, these are your options. You could decide instead of a hundred percent, maybe just five percent.
Sure.
And the same thing about the number of years of the exemption. You could just say one year versus five years. But, the hundred thousand dollar minimum capital investment that is being locked in is just to show, you really want someone in here that's going to make a big, you know, a big hit. So...
So, we have ten years to offer the exemption, and then pass, then it's up to us to dictate how long it's for, et cetera.
The date is actually in the ordinance itself.
March eleven, twenty-nine.
This is March eleven, twenty twenty-nine.
There you go. That's the date.
So, each application will come back to us with the recommendation from the staff, what percentage we should give.
Yes, done on a case-by-case basis. So, each would come back to you for approval by ordinance.
Commissioner Carr? You're done?
I'm done. Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here are none. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes. We are now going to item number seventeen, which is license to encroach Hellas Two, I mean, seven eighty-five Dedekanese Boulevard. Staff report.
Louis Serta is coming up to make the report for you.
Good evening. Louis Serta presenting staff comments. This is for requests to install a ramp to provide handicap accessibility within the public right of way for Hellas Restaurant, seven eighty-five Dedekanese Boulevard. This ramp will be similar to the one that exists with, in front of the bakery. The Technical Review Committee heard and recommended approval of the application on December nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Staff is recommending approval of this as well, subject to nine conditions that are in the staff report, as well as the agreement that's in your packet. I won't read all the conditions, but they do include the ramp must receive approval from the City Building Department prior to construction. The sidewalk must remain undisturbed with a clear, unobstructed ADA accessibility, and damage to the sidewalk will be the responsibility of the applicant to repair and pay for. And again, we are recommending approval of it, subject to the conditions that I read, as well as a total of nine conditions that are in that agreement.
Thank you. I don't have a question, but I have a comment that I'm very glad to see that the ramp would be installed to provide disabled access to the people there. Many times I witnessed, a lot of people, they're trying to get into the restaurant, and they can't get in. So, it's very frustrating for the people with the wheelchairs that do want to go to the restaurant, and they can't. Commission comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, I have no issue supporting the application. I think it's probably a good thing. A lot of times, as I'm driving by, I see disabled people trying to cross, you know, like everybody does, mid-block and not at the crosswalk, and they have, you know, they have a hard time getting on the sidewalk. So, no issue supporting this. This is one of our bigger restaurants in town, so we obviously want to support them and make sure they're successful. But, just for the record, the license to encroach does not go before the Planning and Zoning Board.
That's correct. It just comes before this.
Yeah, just a quick one. Louis, so, there's a ramp in front of the bakery, and then there's a ramp that's proposed to be in front of the restaurant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, it's like up, down, up, down?
Yeah, it'll be a rise and then a flat, and then up again.
Okay. I mean, at some point, it might be a good idea from the city's standpoint just to elevate the rest of the sidewalk to be one flat surface in front of the restaurant if they're in agreement to it. I think it might be an area that we could look to potentially, if there's an option to raise the sidewalks all around Sponge Docks, and obviously, the road at some point, too, with the flooding that goes on the area. It's an area we could look at to refine a little bit further. But, I support this the way it sits today. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan have a comment? No. Are there any public comments on this item? Here are none. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number eighteen, is to affirm appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board would like to request the B O C consider reappointment to the board members listed below. So, they're just asking us to reappoint everybody that's there. We have no more applicants.
So, are we going to make this appointment? Obviously, it's going to be unilaterally, but are we going to give term? Like, are we going to stagger the terms again, or how are we going to do that?
No, this, yeah, this board is kind of different from most of our boards that were set up.
Ball's under the advisory board right now, and under two dash one of our code, it says advisory boards could serve a maximum of ten years. So, as their ten years, I think the two that are coming up next year are Mrs. Dubay and Mr. Marr, unless someone resigns currently.
I remember when we put Celia on there. I can't believe it's been that long. God almighty. Gotcha. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr have a question? Comment?
No, I mean, Irene addressed, just a clarification for me.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is something that I questioned to staff when I first saw it because it didn't make sense to me because most of our boards, you know, we have those staggering terms. We're putting people in. This, though, I'm fine to approve it. I personally know a few of these people on their board, on this board and their ideas, and I think this was one of our, one of our boards that really gets a lot done. However, in the future, is it my understanding that the staff is going to try to make a more universal approach to our boards so that we don't have some where somebody can serve ten years, that kind of thing? Can somebody clarify that, just that we're working towards? Eventually, all the boards will be on the same, here's how many members, here's how many, you know, terms they're allowed, blah, blah, blah?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure because this, I mean, I don't think anybody should serve on any board for ten years. But, I'm looking forward to seeing that kind of universal approach because this is a little bit unorthodox. Because I'd like to see, you know, are there any other applicants? That was my first question. And I guess if we just keep reappointing, 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 it's kind of discouraging people to apply for the board if they might be interested in it. So, in the future, I'm looking forward to making this more in line with what we currently have. But, tonight, I'm fine with reappointing the members.
I agree, we should have term limits on every board, and I know you're working on that. Any public comments on this item? Need a motion?
To approve, to reaffirm the members of the Parks and Recreation Board as proposed.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes, thank you. Number ten is to appoint, the appointment to the Tarpon Springs Housing Authority. We have one vacancy to do resignation of Michelle Johnson-Ferguson. So, we have one applicant, Mary Matthews.
She's got my look. She's got my look.
We have no choice on that one, does it? No comments?
No.
Any public comments on this item? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes, thank you. Well, that concludes the regulation agenda, and we go to the staff comments. Chief?
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
The Attorney?
Yes, tonight, I'm asking for a shade meeting. We're out of the sunshine meeting to be scheduled in the lawsuit titled Metropolitan Systems Inc. versus the City of Tarpon Springs. This is the lawsuit that was filed back in September of twenty nineteen. In specifics, this is the bus bench sign litigation. There has been an offer of settlement that the city has received, and the attorneys handling the litigation would like to get input from the City Commission. So, we're asking for that shade meeting to be held on Tuesday, February eighteenth at six P M.
I open, I'm available that day.
I'm sorry, I missed the date.
February eighteenth to six P M.
Six P M.
Commissioner Carr, can you make it?
I can make it.
Okay. Sure.
Yeah.
Commissioner Donovan, you okay with that?
Yeah, I should be able to make it. I'm checking. I'm, no, one minute.
Vice Mayor, you good with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we all good.
That works for me.
Okay, so, the process then will be that we'll issue a notice, we'll set the court reporter. It will have to be, it'll have to be opened in the open meeting aspect of it either here or upstairs in the conference room. We haven't figured that out yet. We'll give you that. But, remember, we open it to the public meeting, we close it, we go into the shade meeting executive session, then we come back into the open meeting, we close it again. I'll go through that process and the law as it relates to this particular issue on February eighteenth. But, we'll go ahead and get it scheduled. So, thanks for your availability on that. And that's all I have for you tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Licurs?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Jacobs?
I'd just like to wish Commissioner Carr happy birthday today.
Thank you.
Actual birthday?
Yeah.
Commissioner Carr, we start with here. Happy birthday.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's been a privilege to call Tarpon Springs home throughout my life, thirty-four years. I was born in Clearwater and raised in Tarpon Springs, so it's something to celebrate. I love birthdays, appreciate the opportunity. Yeah, to have one, absolutely. I did send an email after, I believe, I attended the Historic Preservation Board Meeting Workshop, and I saw the mayor was there as well. And I mentioned to the city manager, it might be a good idea to have a joint workshop meeting amongst the two boards. And he replied back and asked for a consensus, bring it up for consensus to the rest of the board. So, I would like to propose that we do have a workshop with the Historic Preservation Board and the B O C to discuss the changes that are going to be proposed, or propose any changes to the current code before it comes to the Board of Commission to be voted on. I know we've run some issues before with other boards where it comes to the Board of Commission, and it's not to our standards or what we expected. And then, our residents who are volunteering their time can really not just have their feelings hurt, but really be offended at the hard work that they put in. So, I just think it's prudent for us to be able to review that with them and discuss it. It might not be a long meeting, but I think it's worth our time to look at it.
Mr. Licurs, how we deal with the study? Where we standing with it? Where we standing with it? Do you have the contractors that are doing the study?
Well, again, we had the first public meeting of it, and they're taking the input and working on it, so we're progressing.
Progressing. Are they going to give us a report when they are halfway done, or what kind of a process do you have set up for them?
I'm not sure what it is, but I can get back to you, and again, that could show where probably the appropriate spot for that meeting, if you choose to have it, where that appropriate spot for that meeting is.
Yeah, if you give us more information and then see where we at with that, probably we have a workshop, you know, a workshop, a joint workshop, but that way, we can give them some kind of a direction. Vice Mayor?
I'm good to have a workshop. I think it's probably a good idea to make sure we all get on the same page and not have any miscommunication or misdirection prior to that board coming back with the presentation. I will add that I'm not sure if it's been done or where it stands, but in the past, we have made some recommendations that there be an expanded list of, a material list in terms of not having to go before the Historic Preservation Board if you're, you know, submitting an application and you intend to use, you know, Material X or use Window B or whatever the case may be, to where it kind of streamlines the Historic Preservation Board approval process. So, if that hasn't been done, I still think that it's really wise to try and explore that and come up with some industry standard materials that are basically a staff level of approval. I think that that's probably a really good idea as it relates to the Historic Preservation Board.
Yeah, I would be all for that work session. I think it'd be really worthwhile.
Okay, thank you. Also, I'd like to announce that Saturday, February 15th, we have Movies in the Park from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. That will be hosted by our Recreation Department at the DS Plus Park. And that concludes our regular session meeting, and it's adjourned.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, because we, I'm not sure if Commissioner Donovan and Vice Mayor had any more to say, because I think we're just going off the consensus a minute ago. I don't mean to interrupt you, I just want to make sure there's nothing else on the meeting. Okay. All right. All right.
We all good with that.
Thanks. Thank you. Sorry about that.
It's all right. Well, that concludes the regular session meeting, and it's adjourned at 8:18 PM.